Called the order, the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Rattman thing. First gen item, minutes from September ninth.
Mr. Marshall, September ninth's minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Uh, minutes on September fifteenth meetings.
Make a motion to accept the fifteenth minutes. That's written.
Second. I think it's just missing the appointment to the Charter Committee. There might be, I guess, um.
No, George?
Or does it have to be, or?
I didn't include it on there only because that was strictly an action of the Select Board, so that normally wouldn't have been on the agenda.
Okay. That's on, that's on theirs, okay.
But, yeah, it'll be reflected in their minutes, if you guys are okay with that.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yep, I'm fine.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other? Uh, we next have an A and R application for eleven Barrack Hill Road.
Yeah, so I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is, uh, an A and R, um. First lot on the left, coming off of Barrack Hill Road. That's for Amy Sheridan. Uh, that's longtime family land. She is looking to, uh, cut off a lot there. With hopes of using the funds to restore the historic house.
Wow, good.
When I looked it over, it has acreage in frontage, so I was good.
I'd like to know what historic is in that cellar. Antiques.
I've heard a lot of stories, no ghosts.
The old timers used to fuck their money in the stolen law.
Oh, yeah.
I thought, I thought you meant the ghosts.
Uh, no, we won't go there, that one. No, no, no.
I mean, this isn't a requirement, but I'm just wondering if you talked to, or has the owner talked to Historical Commissioner at all? To see anything about that house?
No, nothing to do with it. No, nothing to do with the A and R.
Okay. I know, I just wasn't sure if they had, they had talked to him.
And to me, everything is there.
The only thing I was gonna ask Mark is, there was a legend on here, stone bounds found, and I wasn't sure what that pertained to.
Uh, there's a bunch of old stone bounds out there from the old Main Street.
Oh, is that the, oh, that's the corners, okay.
Yeah, the old Main Street layout actually, uh, cuts pretty far to the right.
Isment into.
Yeah, so, so this lot abuts, this lot's actually pretty far off of Main Street because the old Main Street layout still exists.
Yeah.
Okay. I just was curious, because I was trying to find on here where the, the stone bounds were, but that's fine, good enough, thanks. Is it, is it a field right now?
No, it's a, it's, it's all wood. It's, it's actually.
It's all scrubbed and everything else.
It's all invasive.
Okay.
Bitter sweet and not weed.
Okay.
If you were here a long time ago, you can remember it as a field.
Yeah, it was, I didn't think it was tall trees. I thought it would turn to thick when you pull them in.
I could've sworn way back, none of them used to have horses there.
Is this before we get into, is this also the one where the ZBA is, or is this a different one?
No, that's the next one.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, make a motion.
Make a motion to endorse the plan.
Second.
Any discussion? You're any none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any others?
Which way do you wanna go?
Well, I mean, I was thinking they could, they can sign while.
I'll push it down that way and come back. Just one. Yeah. I like the, the one's color.
Make sure you sign the right side of it.
Uh-oh. No signature block.
Tired without, you know.
I've got this. Oh, we gotta fold these now. Oh, I wish I remembered how to do this.
Well, that's why you give them to Max to fold.
What's that? Yeah.
Or, uh, close it first.
That's my thing. That's why you get paid for big books.
Hold my, whatever you do. You got a table for in here?
Red will not work, black will.
Slant out three years?
No. Just two.
Just one in that one there.
I just thought it was interesting, it's supposed to show the size of. Any driveways within that, but it didn't show that in the driveway. That's not related to the driveway.
Yeah. Of course, I got it upside down. It's all set?
Yeah.
I gotta sign it.
This is the same one, this is, uh, spare.
Alex, can you sign this? Alex, Alex, you gotta sign up here.
Yeah, wait, wait till we don't have a little small sticker.
Has anybody ever posted from their packet with their name on it?
They don't, she doesn't put.
Oh, oh, Alex has one.
There is one.
Thank you.
Oh, sweet.
If you asked for that, I don't know, I didn't even hear it. Sorry.
Are these exit? Um, I could take them.
Oh, we got a stamp.
Do you need this folded copy? Stamp one of those for return?
We haven't been doing that since we've been signed.
Okay.
You know, one of the papers.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, next up, we have another A and R application for three oh seven Main Street.
No wonder our packets changed, correct?
Yeah, just the zoning, uh, square footage was changed, just in the, in the title block.
Where exactly is this on Main Street?
Is there?
This is, this is three oh seven, the corner of Main Street and Kenwood.
Kenwood, yeah.
It's, it's the. Grandfather's place.
Yeah, the old bag, big, the big farmhouse and the barn.
Okay.
It's cutting it, not in half, but it's roughly in half. Separating the Kenwood portion from the Main Street portion.
Is there a driveway?
Yes, off of Main Street.
Okay.
Our way in the field.
Okay, it's not on that.
And so the access for lot two will be Kenwood, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Excellent.
Now, this is, this is all under sixty-one A.
Currently, yes.
Okay. And it backs up to the town of Rattman, Naquag School, the property does. So, in case, uh, they decide to sell it or, or change property to do something with it, the town will have right of first refusal. And, uh, unfortunately, it's gonna have to have money to do it.
Yeah, it almost happened a few years back in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
But there was no money.
Yep. It'd have been a nice place to put an office with, with, um, office space and, uh,
Yep.
and meeting rooms.
Yes, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Can still do it.
And not only that, the difference in height between this piece of property and the school is, is like twenty-something feet. So, uh, that is not very much of a pitch, in my opinion, for the distance.
Yeah.
You could put some decent, uh, athletic fields.
So is lot one still gonna stay with the house? It's not being demoed or anything, cur, just, it's curiosity, it has nothing to do with this, I know.
I have some later on agenda, because I'm going to the ZBA for the house.
Okay. That's not us, that's lot two seventeen acres, that's a nice little, uh,
Mm-hmm, yeah.
place to put a, uh, office building.
It also would make a very nice place for a road to go up to, uh, between Naquag and Central Tree. For the parents to use, and rather than go all the way around Maple Ave.
I mean, a couple of family members really tried to get the town to buy it, it just didn't.
I know.
Yeah.
I remember that quite well.
Yep.
So we're gonna, we're gonna move on. I think it's been fourteen years since he's been gone.
Yep.
Been a while, yeah.
Understand. I don't, I don't have any issues. It's got frontage, it's got acreage. Beats the A and R requirements. I'll make a motion to endorse, um, three oh seven Main Street A and R. Second.
Any discussion? You're any none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll give you the paper one. Oh, got more ones. I'm not gonna use that again, it's too thick.
So maybe we put the signature block in a different spot every single time.
Excellent, all right. Swat group. Okay, that's there.
Yeah, left-handed.
Yes, sir.
Can I have these back, please?
There we go.
Thank you.
Next item, uh, Bryce Estates Construction Site Inspection, September fifth.
Mister Chairman.
Well, we had to update the, uh, agenda to add the, um, variance applications that the ZBA needs the Planning Board's comments on. We had to update the agenda for one twenty-seven Main and zero seven.
So that was not in the original.
It's in the packet.
I think that one, I, that was.
Is it this one?
Yes, I, I did print it out later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I have those, but, okay, the agenda doesn't have it.
Yeah, that, it was revised, yeah.
This is the one, if I'm not mistaken, they're short on side. Oh, there's two, oh, sorry.
Yeah, one twenty-seven is first on the agenda, but I don't know.
First one is, uh, one eighty-eight Glenwood.
One twenty-seven Main Street.
That's the one with the.
So one twenty-seven Main Street is a different location, that's a different application. The one for Mark is three oh seven Main Street, which ties to the A and R that you just did.
Okay, but one twenty-seven is first on the agenda, but if it doesn't matter, then it doesn't matter.
Let's do one twenty-seven Main Street first.
All right, one twenty-seven Main Street.
This is the proof of a metal, a metal building.
It's, doesn't have the ten-foot from the property line. Yeah, it's like two feet.
Two feet.
If I may, I have a little bit of background information if it's helpful. Um, so Mister Foreman is replacing an existing structure that is currently the same distance from the side setback as the one he's proposing. Um, so actually, yesterday, it didn't make it into your packets, but yesterday I received a letter from the Building Inspector, um, explaining that he does not feel this makes the lot any more non-conforming because it's going in the same spot as an existing structure.
Is it the same size, is it?
It is not the same size, um, but the, it's bigger in size, uh, same side setback, um, and the Building Inspector indicated that he did not have concerns with it, but just that it needed to follow the variance process. So, uh, pursuant to the bylaw, we have to seek comment from the Planning Board and the Board of Health. Um, you're not obligated to make a comment if you don't have anything to share, and if you do, um, Delia will put it in a memo to the ZBA to consider.
Does it matter that it crosses between two lots? Man, it's a real, I'm.
What do you, what do you think crosses between two lots?
Uh, isn't the building, isn't this one lot and this another lot?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, I was looking on the.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what the yellow line meant, too.
Yeah, well, I was looking on the GIS maps, uh, and it looks like it, it was, it's two parcels.
Yeah, three and two, that's what I was concerned about, too.
And it, it crosses over them. I mean, they're owned by the same person, but it, maybe the structure currently crosses because of the way that it's set up, but it, it, it looks more like it was two parcels.
Is there a note about a house that's abandoned? That's not.
That's not his application.
No, that, and that house is gone.
So this is just the, I don't know where.
The lot next door had two houses and, um, one, the house was owned by the son and then his mother, and they tore down the mother's house and moved the mother in with them.
Okay.
So the house that was very, very close to the property line is no longer existent. Um, the only structure that's there right now is a small shed that the neighbors have, that's near the property line.
If I remember correctly, they were okay with this?
We have not received anything in writing from them, um, so we're gonna have to wait to see at the hearing, um, but the butters have been notified.
I thought I remembered something in that email saying.
Yeah, no, yep, that was said initially.
And that's, I'd ask the Building Inspector, my, my tough part, and again, this is not our forte, but they're pouring a slab across two different lots. Therein lies my problem, but I don't, that's, that's the Building Inspector's call, not ours. I'm just, from a Planning Board perspective, I, I, I just, I don't like having a building on two different lots, because it, it leads to issues. And I don't know what the old building was, that's the problem. Was the old building on one lot or two, on both lots? And it doesn't say here in the.
That was never anything that was raised by the Building Inspector about it being on two lots. I don't, so I don't know the answer to that question, but.
Yeah, no. That's the tough part I have with giving any opinion is, is, it's on, the new, the new building that's being proposed crosses two lots and it won't be a, it's a word I'm looking for, um, what did they tell me when I put my shit up? Is that it needs to be movable. When you pour a slab, it's not movable anymore. The slab isn't, it's on two different lots. So therein lies my question, but i- if the Building Inspector is okay with that, I don't have a problem. Because ultimately, this is his, but.
Does the family own both lots?
Both, they own both lots.
So they could have revised the line someday, if they, I don't know if that.
If they don't, then. There, therein lies my problem.
Well, they could move the line, too, I guess. I don't know if that destroys the
This lot is.
option for a second house, but that could be something the ZBA can speak to.
Yeah, it's, it's, Lauren, it's a non-conforming lot by today's standards.
Yeah, it's like, and it's encompassed by the other ones, so.
Yeah, it's only a hundred and twenty-seven feet, or no, I'm sorry, doing my math wrong, a hundred and thirty-five, forty-five, so it's not, it's not the one fifty that you'd need. Now, I don't know that they are required to give us this, but is there a reason that they can't move it back and then come over a little bit with it off the lot line and then everything's copacetic?
That's not for us, that's for the ZBA.
Yeah, the ZBA. I wasn't sure if they had, they had given that information. I guess from the, knowing through the chair, the only problem I have from the Planning Board is it crosses two lots.
Yeah.
It's joint.
Could I add something from a builder's point of view? If the lot's in contiguous ownership, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you know, I, I have to think that way.
Right.
If you own, if you own the property, on both sides of a property line, why can't you put a building wherever you want?
Yep. Well, he probably doesn't wanna move it because it's gonna cost him more money, to come up with a set of plans.
Yeah.
When do plans get updated? When, say they sell a house and, for example, Mark comes in with a property, you know, when does, when does a shed end up on your deed document? You know, Mark brings in a document, it's a pre-existing house or.
It's to be, again, this is outside our scope, but if I was an assessor, how do I assess this for two different properties?
But it's joint, it's still owned by the same person.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess, the only thing from, from a planning perspective I'd have comments on would be a question of the ZBA and the Building Inspector. Is this, I hate to use the word copacetic, but is, is it okay from a, a building perspective? That's all I would say from the planning, because it doesn't violate any of our Planning Board rules and regs. It'd be more of a question, but maybe we don't, that's up for ZBA to ask, I guess.
I think it's strictly in the hands of ZBA.
It's a zoning issue, it's not you guys.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I don't, I don't think.
It's up to them to make the.
Maybe the answer is we make no recommendation, we just leave it alone.
Yeah.
Leave it up to them.
That's most frequently what we do.
Yeah, I would say that. Do we need a motion for that, or do we just?
I do like the idea that, you know.
Somebody should ask those questions.
Somebody should say, um, uh, maybe they ought to come up with a new plan.
Yeah.
Removing the lot lines and.
Nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with us, so.
Looking at this twenty-five by thirty-three foot double garage metal shed. That says it'll take five to six hours for two people.
I know, it's fast.
That was a little aggressive, yeah.
Yeah, I would say.
Quite professionals, maybe, yeah, with equipment.
It's gonna take more than that to pour that foundation, or that, I shouldn't say foundation, that slab.
Well, I don't know, is the slab already there?
Yeah, I don't.
You know? Because there was an existing shed.
No, it says have a concrete slab poured in the back, so they're gonna pour it. I just think we just take a, a no. I don't think we send anything.
No comment.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Lots of comments, but no official.
Yeah, no, comments, but more as citizens.
Okay. Then, uh, on to the next one, which is one eighty-eight Glenwood Road.
Yeah.
No, that was, that was last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, one, uh, three oh seven Main Street.
I don't have that one, that's the one I don't have. It's probably.
I don't either.
Let's see.
Included this paperclip to.
Maybe I got too many papers.
Always, three oh seven?
Oh, I bet I went past it. No, it's Form A. ZBA.
No, that's the A and R.
Yep, let me see what we got here. Form A. Minutes. Variants, oh, I'm sorry, that's right, it's Form A. The only thing that, let me look in the back, I got George's, I don't have, all I've got is one eighty-eight. Mark, you don't have a copy, do you?
Uh, yeah.
Just, let me take a quick look at it, I could pass it around, I just wanna, my own, since it's on.
If it's helpful, it's published on the website, if we need to pull it up on the screen share.
Hey, that's a good idea.
Correct, yeah.
It would be nice also, is there any, anybody from the?
So, so the one eighty-eight is the petitioner's address, so just make sure, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. If you look further down, it might say three oh seven.
Is that one?
You do have it.
Oh, you're right, I apologize. I was looking at the one eighty-eight, that's petitioner's. Sorry, no more drinking and driving.
So what is this one?
I have questions, and forgive me if these are like outside the scope, but.
Yes, that's it, see, it's three oh seven down there.
Also like to construct a single-family house on the property, in, since it's now two, I guess, I mean, with the A and R. It would be a single-family home added to that parcel that currently has the house and barn on it?
Yeah, the ZBA offers it only for, I think it's lot one.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Has the farmhouse and barn.
Okay.
So. So.
Just to clarify, Mark is applying for a use variance because currently it's zoned residential, and he's looking to do, um, some office space, which is not usually allowed in the residential district, so he is seeking a use variance to allow that particular use in the residential district.
But it's a second how, it's a second structure, correct?
What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to come up with a way to save the old, uh, historic estate, the historic farmhouse and barn. It's in very poor condition, got a leaky roof, chimney's about to fall over, the plumbing's half shut off, we're dripping in the basement. The electrical hasn't been upgraded, it needs a septic. Um, so it really probably should be torn down, but, um, I've come up with a way that I can maybe pull enough funding together. Currently, there's, uh, of Alan's estate, there's two children and six cousins that, um, have some stake in it, so this is a way to, uh, to maybe be able to buy them out and save the farm.
Okay.
So looking at putting some form or mix of office space and residential units in the old house, and then build a single-family house on the property for myself. It, um, it's a little bit of a gray area for the ZBA, um, so I would, you know, appreciate some sort of recommendation from the board. Um, it's, uh, let's see, so really the benefits of it is it, you know, you'd have low-impact development, you'd have just a office, a house on eleven acres, would keep the parcel all in one, um, you know, preserves the historic house, the estate, and, um, provides some funding, and it's, you know, it's not a significant deviation from the home occupation by law. It doesn't quite, it doesn't quite fit because the square footage of the house is too big, so that's why I'm going for the use variance. But I think it meets the intent of that zoning.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, how I'm gonna present it to the ZBA.
Is the office for you or for renting as office space?
Uh, combination of both. Uh, combination of both.
And do you know how many units you try and do with the house?
Right now, there's a, right now, there's two residential units. And um, to bring those kind of back to being acceptable condition, it's gonna be probably too expensive. So the idea is to maybe just convert it to office space, which might be a little easier, and then um, maybe start upstairs. And then see what happens downstairs, there's been a tenant there, that's been there since nineteen ninety. So it also lets him kind of stay for the time being.
And this is in our. I'm having a brain, downtown zoning.
No, it's our forty.
Our forty, so it's a.
It's outside of the.
Yeah.
There's a lot of benefits here for the town.
What's the plan for the barn?
So, really the barn's in just as bad condition, the foundation's falling.
How, it's like, how, it's quite old, it's like. The card says like seventeen seventy or something like that, that's probably.
The house is, I don't think the barn is, the back wall is. Bowling out, you know, it's. Like I said, it's been fourteen years, it could be the next snowstorm, but it's gone.
The reason I like this to chair is. We're giving an opportunity to get business in the downtown area, that's why my positive point is.
To make a, look at the bottom corner.
Well, I think there's a problem with the uh. Hundred-foot zone on uh, with the wetlands in that property. We're the conservation commission now. Sorry, I'm being, I'm being a smart aleck. Yeah. Um, I I actually.
And I enjoyed mowing it back when I did and.
Through the chair, I.
I'd like to preserve it.
I'd like to give a positive recommendation to Z B A, cause it's bringing business into town, potential business. With with office space. That would be my plus to it, I'd give the Z B A, look at it from that perspective, restore the historical house and get an office space, so. Where the town gets sort of a twofer.
I like the idea of restoring the historical house, I think the Z B A is gonna have a real wrestle with this one.
This, this is, yeah, Ted Mark, it's wicked gray area.
It's gonna be tough for the Z B A, I did some homework and I researched a bunch of, you know, how often they've given use variances and it's not, it's not common. I think the only chance I have is that I somewhat meet the intent of the home, the home occupation. Bylaw.
Yeah.
But with that being said, if it doesn't. Change, there's, you know, there's, there's no saving it, it's just my last, it's my only avenue at this point.
I just, again, I guess my sales point for you to the Z B A is, we're potentially bringing business or office space into town.
On Main Street.
Yeah, on Main Street too. And it's got plenty of space to bring parking in.
Eleven acres of open space.
Correct, so, I consider it all positive, that's my opinion.
Just second that too.
Got a motion?
I'd make a motion to recommend the Z B A to approve this plan. And and the reason being, if we wanna add that into the motion is, um, potential business and office space in town that's uh, needed.
Yes. I'll second that. I was just gonna ask, does it um, and I'm sure I'm, I'm saying it wrong, but it doesn't convert the.
Uh, he made a motion.
Yeah, it's discussion.
I mean, well, he, the chair has to say.
Okay, he can say.
Yeah, discussion.
I'm sorry, I missed who seconded.
I did.
Oh, thank you.
I had a question real quick, I guess, um, it doesn't convert the whole property. Um, into business use, it just says only in this house.
Yes, my hope is. The primary use of the property will not change, which is another way that the Z B A may be able to approve it. So the primary use would remain agricultural, this is just a, really a variance on the home, home occupation use. So the primary use would remain agricultural and um.
You're just adding a building that could be used for office for the agricultural space.
Well, yeah, and limit it to the footprint of the building. I just didn't wanna put a bunch of money into the house. Someone have a problem with it because it's not, it's because it's zoned residential.
Yeah, but doesn't home occupation, doesn't, does that even require going to the Z B A, what's the?
We have two structures.
Yeah, require a special permit.
For use.
But I don't meet any of the, or I don't meet a lot of the requirements.
Okay.
So the square footage, the number of employees, um, things like that, I I wouldn't be able to meet.
The driveway signs. Okay.
Didn't they give Marsha, didn't you guys give Marsha a dance studio right across the street down there?
B T before Tim, I don't know.
I tried looking that one up, I couldn't find it.
Uh, that was a long time.
Planning board gave that. Planning board, because the the building inspector gave her a building permit, and it had to be ratified by the planning board. That's when I appealed, Sullivan got all pissed off at me.
That's when I, I think I just got on the commission, the planning board rather, at that time. Please, in the other room, can you take that conservation commission off of that? Picture you got there, and is there anybody online, or we need to know if there's a public out there? Thank you.
That's a good point, Dick, I hadn't even thought about it. Everybody on Zoom.
Okay, had a motion, second, anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So we need to get a memo to the Z B A.
Yep. Much appreciated.
Well, I hope it works out, Mark, cause.
Yeah, I hope so.
We need office space in town.
Yeah, it's gonna take a lot, it's not, the approval isn't the V L N D, it's gonna take some, some funds.
Should talk to our town administrator and see if he'll lease some office space from you, I'm dead serious. I mean, we're using the wood studio as a backup for uh. For dispatch and a fire, and a assistant fire chief, there's an opportunity.
Not a bad idea.
Wow. Yeah, commission duty as a rule.
Yep, alright, that's that.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care.
Assuming we're back on a regular, or the old.
Number five, four.
Number four, Bryce Let's, uh, Bryce Estates Construction Inspector, September fifth. Which was uh.
September.
The report is actually September ninth.
Yeah.
The inspection was on the fifth.
Okay, see.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, are these the ones you're talking about? Acceptance, reinspection, is that the, from September eighth, Quinn Engineering?
Uh, no, September fifth.
I don't have any, I don't have those.
It should say, on the top, it says September ninth, but the inspection was on the fifth.
Okay, mine says September eighth from Quinn Engineering, but.
Different, the the one that marked September fifth is Lindsay Lane in Woodside Ave. And then there's more recent ones from the eighth, that I think we just got this afternoon.
I sent, I sent some.
Anything that we got this afternoon was not included.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what the eighth September ones noted as September eighth.
I didn't see the other ones that, uh, Kevin did.
At this point, other than reading it, I don't see. Need for a whole lot of comment, obviously, at the, at this point, when this was done. You simply say, and the significant work remains before Lindsay Lane can be considered complete.
Yes, we're gonna need a one, a newer one from that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the twenty third, so.
And then the September ninth, the chair, Woodside, it just doesn't say complete or anything like that, it's just a report that there's sidewalk paving underway. And contractor fill it, wetland crossing, so we're gonna need one.
That sidewalk is not out of base three, it's an old sidewalk.
Base two A.
Under the detention pond, it's all done in. Buttoned it all up now.
Yeah, cause that's on the Charnakill side, not on the one twenty two A side.
Left it undone so the equipment could go across. Tune it up.
Now that it's all done, the detention pond.
Yeah.
Okay, we finished the site.
I don't really, through the chair, I don't have any comment on September ninth, it's just information only. This one right this.
So that was just a regular side inspection.
Yeah, just information only.
Right, correct.
Yeah. No.
Okay.
Is it possible for me to get copies of those? You guys always used to say.
It is in the packet.
I don't know if that's online or something like that.
Here, if you want, you can.
Well, that's all right, I'll get it.
Okay.
Okay. Then is the fire inspection, which is on Lindsay.
Yeah, which apparently they have a problem with the fire hydrant.
It's all fixed.
All fixed, turn around.
Spun it, yeah, I don't know how it gets spun, he must have put it in though, it's all good.
So that's gotta be, Kevin, just get it to say, or Seth has to say, yeah, Seth just asked, it's really not Quinn, it's Seth that approves that. So we just need an update on that. So should we send a, a letter or a email to Seth, please? Confirm that uh. Fire hydrant is in appropriate position?
Well, so, um, once the developer gets in touch with the fire department. The fire department will then contact the planning board.
Is that the way it's supposed to go? I, I, I'll call Seth, I don't care, I just didn't, I've never done that before, it's always gone through the board.
We, well, we got the report, um, we can provide, we, we would typically provide you a copy with that, but I'm not sure if he provided, sent that to you already.
I think he called Tommy, like, like for all.
I can, I can, I, I have it on my calendar to send it to you after tonight's meeting.
Okay, so then what do I do, just call Seth?
Yeah, so you would, you would work directly with him.
Alright.
Or whoever he has, he advises you to speak to.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, 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 I have no problem with that, I just, that's different from the procedure we had done in the past, that's, I can't remember.
Do the chair ever get one of these before, so. It's my first experience in a subdivision, I have that usually. So, yeah, Seth will take care of that.
Okay, um. Number six, Bear Hill two, consultant engineer letter, as-built plan, um, this is the end.
Says the plans are accepted.
Yeah. Reviewing if they finally be complete. So. That's kind of the end of that one.
I, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
On September twelfth, we received a letter from uh, Quinn Engineering. Indicating that he reviewed the road as-built plan on Bear Hill two dated twenty seven November. I'm sorry, I'm backwards, November twenty seven, twenty twenty four, with the revision date of nine nine, twenty twenty five. Prepared by New England Environmental Design LLC of Rutland, we review these plans and find them complete, that's his report to us.
Perfect, okay.
Yes, yes, it's, it listed as Bear Hill two, but Arrowhead Way.
Yeah. And I did take a ride through there and I saw that they had taken care of all the re- aprons that. I felt was uh, too low and then now right up there, so I'm very pleased.
And and the only issue I had that I talked to Kevin about was. And I, I know I'm sounding like a broken record, but the original plan I thought had granite um. Curbs around the water, what's the word I'm looking for, stormwater areas?
Catch basins?
Catch basins, thanks, and I've heard, second part, I haven't heard from Chris, that it was suggested they not be put in. Me personally, I got a hard time with that, cause the subdivision plan is a subdivision plan, it wants to be removed. Fine with that, but we gotta go through the right procedure of doing that of, and I'll, I'll ask the board. I think there should have been a letter from the director to the board asking that that be, ask as a waiver or a change, that's my opinion.
Can I comment, can I comment? I, I spoke to um, uh, Chris Klosky on that, and his problem is that, is, if it's a Cape Cod berm. He doesn't want the granite curb inlets, because what happens is, they're square. And, and a berm will come right up to the end of them, you know, I call it a bread loaf berm, it looks like a loaf of bread. But they'll come right up to the edge of them, but the Cape Cod berm, when the plow comes up, it just rips the granite curb inlet, I mean, right out, so. He did say to me, and I put in my, my notes to you guys, that if you want a letter from him, he'll do it, if you think you need, I. I would think it would be voted as a field change, but uh, I would think that you might need to at least. Acknowledge it, but, but he asked us not to put him in.
Well, that's through the chair, that's what I was asking for, I don't mind with field changes, I just, I'll sound like a broken record, I need to document it.
Yeah.
And there's no documentation.
With that, I, I agree.
I think we probably need a request of quiz, a letter recommending that change.
Get it to Dylan, she can get it on the next board meeting, so we could um, vote on it and get it, get it as a field change or whatever. To the, I just, I wanna get everything in writing and down, so there's no questions from A, the public, or B, from us down the road. Cause the plant, cause he, um. Kevin's approved the plan that has it in there, but it isn't in there, so that's the reason why I wanna get the documentation, so. The plan's approved, we have some documentation saying that, that um, we're deviating from that plan because of requests from the D P W director.
Okay.
I think we may have already had a waiver to that. Cause they weren't even, he didn't even mention it on his, he mentioned it on his pioneers and Woodside Ave for Bryce Estates. But he didn't mention it on Arrowhead Way, I believe that there would be, there may have already been a waiver. On Arrowhead Way, but there definitely isn't on Pioneer and Woodside, so that, that needs to be voted.
Can, can we, go ahead, sorry, Dylan.
Was, is this, is this letter with regards to which subdivision?
Arrowhead, Bear Hill two.
Bear Hill two, okay.
But we also need one for Bryce Lemon.
Yes, Bryce Lemon, but let's get to that.
Which phase? Oh, oh, you wanna do a.
I want, yeah, I wanna, I, I think we should, we should not mix things up, we should. And the other thing I was gonna ask, to Cleese's standpoint is. Let's verify that on the original subdivision plans, there is no waiver, or granite, because I know in the past, we have wavered them. So let's verify before we ask Chris, is, I don't have the plan in front of me, so. I'd like.
Right, you, you mean a decision.
Decision, yeah.
For Bear Hill.
Bear Hill two, if there's a waiver in there.
It's all set.
You should, I guess what I'm trying to say to you, Norm, is that, before we send Chris a letter asking for a list, let's verify that it hasn't been waived.
We definitely need one from Bryce Lemon, no matter what.
When we get to that one, yeah, I definitely. That one, I know we didn't give a waiver for. We gave a lot of waivers, but that wasn't one of them. Anyhow, that's, that's my, I think we should check. Typical Missouri engineer check.
If we had our meeting in the annex in the office.
Yeah, we could go and pull the plans and take a look and. Uh, there's a missing building somewhere.
Tell me about it. I got a short comment, um, with head walls, is that what they're, are they called head walls, or catch basin?
Kerb inlets.
Kerb inlets, yeah. Uh, the granite one, I've been staring at them in different towns where I've been driving, states even, um, they do have a cutout, right? More water goes in, is that the idea, where if there isn't, if it.
And, and it picks up leaves and things like that. It has, it has a better way of getting stuff, because it's a big opening in the back.
Yeah, not only is the grate in front of it, but you got that opening.
That's the trade-off from a civil engineer, you take away the granite curb. And you stick, you lose the ability to get more water into the.
When you catch more.
Yeah.
Crap that goes into the sun.
And that could block, say all that stuff just lands and, and clogs the grate. Then you lose the ability for water to even go anywhere, so the inlet helps. Either push it all, it's got the ability to, to move that material.
It doesn't, as long as you run the Cape Cod berm right to the backside of the, of the um. Great grate. The water will go in, it's just that the other stuff will flow by. It doesn't, it, it just doesn't catch the leaves and things like that.
I've seen them clogged both ways.
Yeah, me too.
It's just, in the past, again, this is before Chris, but that was one of the reasons Joe liked this granite, because it was a better.
He liked that big throat.
Yep, because you get more water into the storm area, that was his reasoning for sticking with it and. Now we got a new sheriff in town and he's got a different philosophy, that's fine, I'm good with that.
And Gary didn't like him either, so, phase one doesn't have him, phase two has him, cause that was a joke, phase one, Gary may take him out and then. Phase three is Chris and he doesn't like him.
Oh, do they make removable granite?
Yeah, with a skid steer.
The ones I've been seeing are concrete, have you?
No.
Yeah, in Connecticut, they're concrete, yeah.
Those are one pieces.
Oh, I don't know.
And it's interesting, I've been taking pictures of them, but.
They're uh, those are usually one pieces.
They're like dipped at an angle too, so they 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 look pretty cool. I might bring it up at some point.
But uh, I can see with a snowplow.
You wouldn't rip them up the same way you would if it was concrete.
Cause the snowplow rides up the side of a co- of a Cape Cod berm and it would just rip, just rips them and it and it it happens all the time.
That's one of the reasons why we went with the Cape Cod berm, to save the plows.
Yeah, and to save the berm.
Exactly. Although there's some berms on Grizzly as I drove it, that the plow, the uh, plow trucks have decimated them.
Wow.
Cause that's not a car that took that skid path out on the berm, that was this, that was a plow, but anyhow, I digress.
Okay, uh, we settled on that? Yes.
Oh, it's uh, I guess number seven, oh, does anybody got their hand up? We got people now?
Yeah, we don't see any.
Nope. So I guess number seven is me.
Yep.
Alright, here's my scenario that I wanted to have the board discuss about. I felt I was a little quick to pull the trigger last meeting, because uh discussion with a select board member is that the placeholders are their responsibility. The planning board's responsibility for roads is are they done, or are they not done? So, I think I got out of, I got ahead of the game, and I wanted to discuss with the board. Um, my thought process was to provoke all four of those motions, but I wanted feedback from the board before I go, before I do that. Cause my opinion is, I made a mistake and I wanna rectify it.
May I involve, get involved in that?
First of all, you know, I'm not saying it is a mistake or isn't a mistake.
Okay, I I, in my mind, I made a mistake, because I think it's the select board's authority to do placeholders, not even for the planning board to be involved in, again, that's my opinion.
I have no problem one way or another.
Okay.
If you wish to revoke them, hey.
Of course, I'm gonna ask Tamika, have they've already put those placeholders in? Or are they, I I know the warrant's not been official, but have they already voted or put the?
Um.
Okay.
And to, in your defense, we came to the planning board seeking guidance, because in this case, street acceptance is kind of your wheelhouse, and so I think it's helpful to the select board to know like, hey, there's no way this road's ever gonna be done, we're not even gonna bother placing it, versus you guys saying, you know what, we're moving down the right path, we think it's worth placing it and following the process. So, I I I do have to disagree with the statement that the select board is exclusively responsible for placeholders, because to be fair, they're responsible for finalizing the warrant.
I just.
Basically, the office staff that puts everything on there, with that being said, it is on there because um it the warrant closed on Friday, and we had already started drafting the warrant, um, so it technically is is on there for for the time being, with that being said, the select board could choose to pull any of the articles before they finalize it.
And that was, that's to your last statement, that was my thing, that I didn't think, again, the planning board should have not be, I get the select board asking us, this is my opinion again, I don't think they should have asked us, I think we're, our ask from the select board, is it ready or is it not ready, that should be it, that that's my opinion to our board. And I'll let you guys and lady um throw opinions in.
Um, real quick, I'd say, you know, you you, I don't know if you're allowed, but it sounds like you you made rules around the motion, so at least it's not like you're, you don't have, you didn't step over anyone's toes because of that, and um.
I just think I was wrong.
Yeah, I guess in the future, if you wanna leave it to them, I'm just saying, I I think you you at least provide yourself avenues to get out of them too, that that's I guess what I'm saying.
And and I would also caution, and I mean this in a very respectful way, the opinion of one select board member isn't representative of the entire board. Um, and I will say, from a staff perspective, it's it's the staff that are preparing the warrant that then gets presented to the board for their finaliza- finalization, station, I think that's the word. Um, so, it actually is helpful to the staff in what we have to present to the board.
And I apologize, the select board person I was talking to wasn't representing the select board, I was just looking for an opinion, yeah.
Okay.
I I should, probably should put that out there, the individual I spoke to was not representing the select board, I was just asking sort of a question, should we or should we not be getting questions like that, so, that was it. And in the past.
Nothing?
No, I, I think, you know, I I give Tim credit for owning what he thought was a mistake, but I don't really have an issue with it either way.
Your new um, road acceptance policy says the select board is supposed to ask you, so they asked you, and the placeholder was the only way that you could do it and make it work, so that it was fair to everyone. So, I think, in my opinion, and the select board put it on there, so, why would you wanna revoke it? It 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 was probably, and and again, just my opinion, the right thing to do. I I think it's, and 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 I heard Dicky say, it's in the past who gives a he didn't say, but you know, it's in the past, so let's just move forward.
I just wanted to bring it up to the board, cause I think I made a mistake.
I don't think he did.
So I I saw, but I wanted to have it up to the board, where we wanna go, cause I'm fully prepared to make uh to revoke it. That's what I wanna do.
Well, I mean, I think if the actual question posed to us at last meeting is, is it ready or is it not ready, it's not ready.
Correct. At that point, yeah, so that's why I I shouldn't have gone, eh, this is again, my opinion, I shouldn't have uh gone to the select board and asked for a placeholder when we don't have a final opinion on the road yet. That that's, that's my whole reason for bringing this up and having Delia put on it, because I think we were, and again, the road acceptance policy is out there, I get it, I do, but I just.
I don't, just keep in mind that which policy uh actually applied to which roads, right?
Help me out here then.
Some, because remember, you have a policy that was adopted just a couple of months ago, which I don't know if those would apply to all of the streets, the streets that are uh up for acceptance, so that's just something to keep in mind, um.
I'm looking for, I'm gonna say it again for the fifth, I'm looking for help from the board.
Alright, I would say that we should revoke it, yeah, because if it, if the question is, do we, is it ready or not, the answer is no. Hard and fast. I think there's cause to revoke it.
It leaves an avenue, in my opinion, to help. What's wrong, what's wrong with trying to help at the, you know, last moment, you know, if you can get something done and satisfied? Everybody's satisfied?
I think we gotta start, you know, we gotta, we gotta be.
Well, just realize, we're getting close to the end of all subdivisions at the moment. Uh, I would say in the next couple of years, you you'll be all done, and then get ready.
I don't, I just think.
You know, the process that is laid out, is that the select board votes to refer it to the planning board for a recommendation on acceptance, not a recommendation on whether to put a warrant article.
Exactly.
So, if that's what they're looking for, then then we would need to make a recommendation to either accept or not accept, and then they depending on what we say, it's either ready to be put on the warrant or it's not, I mean, that's, those are the steps that I believe are laid out in the current road acceptance plan.
So, you you're correct, but if I may? That, the reason that you did that was because you didn't have the reports back from Quinn, you didn't know whether the roads are ready or not ready. So, at that time, you couldn't make a vote whether it was acceptance or not, so what you did was prudent, hold a place on the warrant, and if, now it gives us till the twenty third, and and everybody was happy about that. If, and the select board, you know, it was one member, but they already put it on there, wh- what, doing that is, does what? It's already on, it's already, there's already placeholders, it it has absolutely no effect, whether you revoke it or not, I I, at this point. It it doesn't matter, because it's gotta move forward, so the select board has to hold a public hearing on October twentieth. At that point, if the if the stuff isn't done and the stuff isn't ready, it's all gonna come up at that meeting, and then they they take it off the warrant, they just don't put it on, so, nothing about what happened the other night was was wrong, it was absolutely correct, you didn't have the proper information in front of you to make a, a a recommendation one way or the other. That's why you did it the way you did it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, are we in a position to make a motion, or I'm just trying to keep it moving?
Well, what I was trying to do, Delia, is I wanted to get input from the board before I go anywhere, and I'm not, and I'm not feeling any.
Well, I mean, I think if we make a motion, then we could decide where, we could see where everybody's opinions lie, or are we at that place, or do we wanna continue discussion, or where are we?
I think it's.
I don't know what form the motion should take, even.
I would make a motion to revoke our, um, was it, uh, recommendation for a road acceptance.
Or placeholders.
Placeholders, yes, uh placeholders.
Do we need to specify which ones?
We we had four motions on the, we had four of those.
There were a couple, I mean, but there were for.
It was for one for each one, it was for Woodside, um, Arrowhead, Pioneer, and Lindsey Lane, if I remember right.
Was Lindsey, okay, okay.
It was for all four, if I remember right, to make it, yeah, so.
So that I amend the motion to include Lindsey Lane, Woodside Ave, Pioneer Circle. Which one am I missing?
Arrowhead.
And Arrowhead. Or the way.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Hate to say this, but discussion.
Can I ask a question, what what good would it do to revoke it?
I don't know, and and I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate, but the the only, the only thing I'd, that I'd bring up is, as far as our recommendation, I don't believe we're obligated to give any recommendation until the night of the public hearing.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And I thought I was, a- again, this is my thought through the chair, I felt that as a planning board member, I was overstepping our authority, and again, I I I get it that they, the select board ask, but I don't, again, I don't feel they should have asked, is what I'm getting at, um, and secondly, I I think we overstep, because like Lauren has said, she read out what our responsibilities are, accept or not accept, and to your point, Norm, we don't have to do that until the, to the town floor, so.
And I would, I I would say that, you know, does it make any concrete difference with, for these roads if we revoke these? I don't think so, but I think that if we're trying to sort out and do the proper steps moving forward, it's important to lay out publicly what those steps are, and acknowledge that maybe we didn't do them right that way, but this is what they're supposed to be, and this is what we'll do going forward, I mean, they're on the warrant, there's gonna be the public hearings, like, does it make a difference concretely? Not really, but for a matter of sort of process and procedure, I think it's important.
I think may maybe down the road, looking for a little clarification on that acceptance policy.
Absolutely, yeah, there's some.
I don't think it's clearly enough written.
How would the select board know? If you guys don't ask, if they don't ask you guys, there's no one else to ask, you just didn't know at the time. What you did was absolutely prudent, you told them, look, we don't have enough information yet, put a placeholder, when we have the information, we'll get it to you, you have till October twenty third, it didn't hurt anybody, except it gave them a little bit of direction. It was the right thing to do, I mean, I I don't know where, you know, why you wouldn't think that it isn't, it is, it's the right thing to do. They're gonna, they need direct, like, it's it's like saying to the Concom, eh eh, are you gonna give a certificate of compliance on that? Well, we don't have enough information yet, okay, well, as soon as I I know, then, you know, we'll get a certificate of compliance, but you know, so give us a placeholder, I mean, that's, that's a lot of, that's what, it it's, any board, the select board, I mean, they're not involved in in what's going on here, they gotta hear from you, at least to say, look, you know, we're we're close, they basically make a placeholder or or leave it open, and then, and then, I I think that's absolutely prudent in any time, I mean, I'll tell you, the the only, I I I get roads accepted in a lot of towns, so I have a lot of, and it it's a process, no matter what town you're going, but it's never an issue, it always gets laid out, it always gets put on the warrant, and then, when they finalize the warrant, if the planning board tells them to pull it, they pull it, it it's, it's even, I I mean, even in, you know, Shusbury Holden, and Holden is really tough, uh, but uh Chelton, I've had, I've had roads accepted, they never, it's never, the process is never so withheld at this level. It should, if they, the streets should get laid out, if you if you ask them to get laid out, if you have a public hearing, then they pull it. Eh 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 if it's not ready, they pull it, if it's ready, they don't, I think what you did was prudent.
Um, yeah, I fully understand, I believe, uh, the motivations of the developer to want these accepted. Uh, at that meeting, it was two, two meetings ago, I believe it was his lawyer that said, these will get on the warrant, these will be accepted, this is all gonna go through. Uh, I understand that that might be the general feeling, but we need to do what is required of us by the way we set this out. And we set the standard by how we are dealing with this now, not what happened in the past, but what we are doing now. And based on what we are asked to do, is it ready or is it not, the answer is no.
How do you know that? You didn't have a report.
Mr. Chair, could we please have some order?
What's wrong with me? I can talk.
May I ask a question, or I'm gonna say make a suggestion, um, in my time here, I feel like we've done road acceptance process different every time, and I think that that was the, the reason why this this policy was written, I think that the challenge is, is that when you speak realistically about the time of when the request is submitted versus the reality of getting the work done versus timing of the warrant and finalizing things, public hearings, it's very hard to have everything line up so that you have the information you need by a very early date, and I think that that's the challenge that we're facing right now, and I think that maybe it's worth relooking at that policy to see if we try to time things differently, cause there are certain things where held to by MGL. Um, but I think it's probably unreasonable to think that a road would be at a point where it was so near to completion two months before town meeting, that the planning board could confidently say, yep, this road is ready to go, put it as a placeholder on the warrant, I don't know if that makes sense the way I'm explaining it, um, and I think, Tim, to to, just to your point, technically speaking, every article request we receive is a placeholder, when you think about it. Because the select board has the option to take every single item off of there if they wanted to, with the exception of a citizen's petition. So, you know, our departments submit articles, in a way, this was almost your version of submitting an article request to say, hey, let's put a placeholder on there, knowing that there's the option to pull it, if that's just a different way to look at it.
Yeah, just, I I don't know, from the way you're looking at it, it seems to me that almost what you're saying is if the developer requests the layout of the roadways, then it's a ne- almost a necessity for the select board to put a placeholder on a warrant.
Yeah, I I mean, so MGL doesn't speak to that, like, MGL doesn't say, if you lay out the ways, you have to put it on the warrant, or you have to put a placeholder on the warrant, we have just honestly done it differently, pretty much every single time.
And that was the point of getting that, that road ex- road acceptance policy in place. So maybe I need to ask a better question of the board, is that road acceptance policy in place for these four roads?
Only for Lindsey Lane.
Only for Lindsey Lane?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's a whole different curve ball I just got thrown.
But so bear in mind that a lot of it is still MGL.
Yeah.
More of it's MGL than it is a policy.
I I get that, but I'm just, I'm I'm trying to, trying to wrap, to Lauren's point, I'm trying to wrap my hands around the process.
Is there a previous version of the road acceptance policy, or there were just, we just didn't have one?
Just didn't have one.
It's basically the select board that that handles that.
Yeah, we just basically did a.
What issue?
We did the Roman.
Yeah.
Comes down, that's what we would do.
I mean, there is something in the subdivision rules, but it's very brief, I don't know, and. Yeah.
Yeah, it does, it doesn't give us a lot of.
I don't know, but there is something in there, just.
The challenge is that so much of the responsibility falls to the select board, but the planning board is really the subject matter expert.
Correct.
Um, and I think having a collaborative relationship in that respect of not having it be, well, you know. This person has exclusive authority, kind of that collaboration of like, we know what our responsibility is, but you guys know. Where we're gonna go, and I think Cle can even speak to it, I I don't know if it was last year or the year before, what, was it Woodside, one of the roads. Even you said, yeah, I can't make this happen for town meeting, and we pulled it. Do you remember which one?
Uh, I think it was Woodside and Pioneer and Arrowhead.
Yeah.
I was, all three of them, what happened, and then what happened in the spring, I put them on. And and I, and and um Leah said to me, you didn't get them here in time, so we couldn't get them on the warrant, even if we wanted to. So I said, fine, we'll just move them to the fall warrant, and that would be fine, so, you know, the these have been in place since, I wanna say February or March. Uh, or ma- maybe. Yeah, so I mean, I I submitted these a long, long time ago, and I just got a punch list in like August. So it 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 it's, I did really, and and then on Lindsay Lane. You just got a request at the last meeting. Hi, ha- ha- and and the bo- and the and the thing closed on the nineteenth, what would, how could you do that? If you're following your new policy, now you have to ask for a punch list, and I can't even do, according to the policy, I'm not even supposed to produce the ASBIL. Until after he comes back with, when the punch list is done, I am doing the ASBIL now, but that and that'll be done, but like I say. If you read my response to Kevin's comment, you know, all this re- you know, punch list, we finished everything except for a granite curb. That I I didn't realize we needed to do, when you come off of Main Street, off of a state road, you have to make the curb, the roundings, out of granite. So I ordered the granite, I ordered the guy to come do it, he's doing it on, he told me he'd be here on the twenty seventh to do it. Other than that, that, all those punch lists are one hundred percent complete. I don't have a punch list for Lindsay Lane, because um, uh, uh, they want us to wait until we have the reports for um. Uh, from Yankee, which they don't have yet, so, uh, as soon as I get those, I'll turn them in, but Lindsay Lane, trees are done, bounds are done. The only thing I'm, like I said, I'm working on the ASBILs, I'll have those this week, it's ready to go.
There's a motion, let's vote and be done with it.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Once again, refreshing the motion is.
Uh, the motion is to revoke the recommendation for Lindsay Lane, Arrowhead Way, Pioneer Circle. And Woodside F.
Placeholders.
Placeholders, yeah, correct.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, they're not revoking, so just, I'm saying leave them, at least, if they believe it as is, yeah.
I am voting aye to revoke.
I'm voting aye, I have to.
Aye.
Three to, three to two.
So then we have to tell the select board to, that we're not recommending placeholders, I guess, that's correct.
Okay.
Again, to Lauren's point, I don't think it matters in the reality, but I I think it takes us out of the. And again, maybe on on the future. We need to have a discussion with the select board about this, about this uh road acceptance policy and how it should proceed between the two boards, cuz. I I really believe right now, I don't have a good feeling on how this is operating. Cuz again, uh, to to Cle's point, that something should have happened, but I don't think there was a good. Mechanism in place to do that, and we need to. I I have to default to what Lauren read, thumbs up, thumbs down, that's all, it's from me from a planning board perspective. With the exception of Lindsay, because that that is supposedly under the new. Road acceptance, so, again.
The placeholders are already there, what happens, they just stay there, right?
Yeah. This is, for me, it's just basically undoing something that I felt I did wrong.
Okay.
That's it, that's all.
Okay, next item. Uh, release a bond request for Bryce Estates Phase Three. And at least we have received a request for a.
Yes.
I got, through the chair, I've done my research on Mass MGL. S- chapter, or maybe it's section forty one, chapter eighty one U. And I think we got a little bit of a. Dichotomy, that's a good word, between um. In our subdivision regs, between tri-party and bonds, how they're handled. Uh, it just, I I don't, I'm not an attorney, this is where I need some support from KP, cuz I don't understand. I still think we can do reductions, I just, I wanted to bring that up as part of this discussion, is that. We need somebody to look into that and see if our subdivision regs are correct. I guess through the chair, I would ask, can can we have KP take a look at that and give us an opinion? I'll ask the board that.
I believe that the request was for the complete re- for the complete release of the bond.
I'm off subject, yeah, I just saw when it was se- chapter forty one, section eight one U, I did some review and. That talked about tri-party, talked about bonds. And then, uh, I think there was a money aspect to it, there were three points, if I remember reading it right, and then I read our subdivision regs. And they didn't seem to be. They didn't tie to eighty one U as I thought they would, but again, Delia, I'm not an attorney, I I'm, it's, it's just me reading it as a layman. And I thought maybe to Delia and Norm, we could just, again, we'll continue with this, but this is sort of a side topic, could we just have somebody look at that and see if we're off?
Can I ask a question?
And I had to have to say, you know, I I I've done a lot of thinking, I've read over that section of the Mass General Law. And our subdivision regulations, and I'm thinking that there's, I'm I'm thinking of three possible different scenarios. There is. I believe a a reasonable possibility, we can grant a bond reduction. Under the tri-party agreement, which we have a signed agreement, and we have language in our subdivision regulations, and there is language in Mass General Law. All three places regarding it, that we can actually reduce. That bond to some number. Equal to or greater than ten percent of the original bond. That's the ten percent that we withhold for one year after road acceptance. We could also take a look at the one statement in our subdivision regulation that talks about no bonds being released. Until roads are accepted, in which case, if we go through that, when that bond is released, we have nothing. We don't get that ten percent for the year. And I I feel, I'll just go back to something as simple as, we've had a report about, you know, uh, low man's seedy and grass not growing. Okay, if the grass doesn't grow and we've got that ten percent after the road's accepted, guess what, we got something to fix it. If we dismiss the bond under that other provision, and I I am thinking that our actual subdivision regulations. Maybe giving us a choice, we can follow either the one part or the other. That's, I'm not saying it is, I'm saying I think maybe, that's a possibility. The other. Final thing is, I would say, okay, let's go to KP Law. Let's have them look at the two, see if, is there a preference, i- is one more binding than the other? Uh, and personally, I don't, I don't think it is, uh, and like I say, I guess I just, I look at the tri-party agreement. Which is what we've been doing for the past twenty five years. Uh, and we have withheld that ten percent for the full year after acceptance, I don't believe we've ever had to make use of it. Uh. The only time I pulled a bond was long before acceptance.
Yes, correct.
That's, that's a whole other situation.
Is this something that we probably need to add to the agenda? Sounds like something that actually needs to be fleshed out, and I don't know, so that everybody is.
That's what I was gonna ask you, can we add it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because I I I don't wanna, I don't wanna interject that into uh, uh Attorney Kritzy's res- r- request. I just, when I was doing the review to be able to to.
So is this about the partial release of the bond, you you're you're questioning whether there needs to be an alignment?
Yeah, between partial and total, that's where I'm struggling, cuz in our subdivision, we can, if the road's fully accepted, we could release the bond and hold nothing. And I I I'm struggling between which one, it, to Norm's point, should we leave in our subdivision regs that choice? Or should we, is, does MGL tell us that we should do one or the other?
Subject that needs a separate, that needs to be a separate. Letter, uh, item for discussion.
I don't see the need for any more discussion right now, I think we need to go to KP now.
Well, I mean, I I I think that. I mean, in defense of the other members, I don't know, cuz this, this is not something that's on the agenda. So I think, so that everybody has an opportunity to read up and do their own, um, reading. To digest what is being, you know.
And I I apologize to the board, I digressed, because when I was trying to figure this out of yes or no. I was like, I sort of took a deep dive into eighty one U and read it. And I'm going, uh, uh-oh. But getting back to, and I I apologize for getting the wheeze of getting off, we should get back to 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 this request, I apologize for getting off, I just. I think it's something that we need to, maybe in the next meeting, the.
But it's still, to me, it's all, it's all joined together, I know, but.
I I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag this meeting out for hours, is what I'm getting at.
This this request is to completely release it, correct?
Just to lower it to zero.
It it is a complete.
It, well, it does say to, to release the interest of the town.
It is a complete release, as I read it.
Okay, I.
So I mean, this so it's, I just wanna make it clear that that's a, this is a separate item that Tim is discussing.
Yeah.
So I can put it as a, as something on the next agenda that we wanna revise or. Uh, review partial and complete release of bond procedure in the town subdivision rules, is that correct, or?
Okay, I'm fine with that, I mean, putting this off a couple weeks before we get it to KP, it doesn't matter to me.
It's not really, oh, can I talk, yeah, okay, so. I asked for a bond reduction, I asked for a bond reduction, and that's what's on, and Delia sent me back an email and said, it doesn't. Your request doesn't meet MGL blah blah, I forgot which one, so I called George and I said, what do I do, he said, well, if she wants us to do that. Then I I have to send a certified letter to the clerk and ask for the bond to, that's what you were referring to in your letter, so.
Complete, it was for a complete release, so that's what MGL says.
That's not what I asked for, I asked for the bond to be reduced to zero, and then I put in parentheses, I understand that you hold ten percent. Now, I can do that in writing, because I'm just looking for a bond reduction, but if you.
That's 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 actually a complete release of the bond, that's what you're asking for, is that?
No, not, not, I wasn't asking for that.
The letter dated September eighth from your attorney to the town says. Uh, thereupon, release the interest of the town.
But but that's, that's because Delia asked me to do that, I wasn't doing that.
Well, no, she asked you to send a a registered letter.
You guys, we have done this forever, this way, okay? When I asked for, I just asked for a bond reduction, because the work's been done, and I said, I know you hold ten percent for a year, fine. Just give me a bond reduction, I did that in writing, Delia said, no, you didn't do it correctly, s- you have to follow this law, so. That letter from my attorney is following the law. I don't care about that, all's I care about is a bond reduc- you didn't even ask Kevin to do a bond reduction. I mean, do a bond reduction, if if you don't even know if it's ready for that yet.
Your original request, and this is something that I think was, was a little bit unfor- unfortunate language. Because you did say, reduce it to zero.
Thank you.
And then put, you put that addendum on there.
I understand you hold ten percent.
Okay, it it.
So just reduce it to the, to the ten percent.
No, less than the ten percent.
Oh, okay, well, I I can reword that.
And can, may I say, if I'm not, if I I could be wrong, but my understanding is that, when there is a full release of the bond. There is a ten percent that is held.
No.
It's not, yeah, in the past, what we've done is, we reduce, if there was, say the bond was six hundred thousand dollars, I'm just throwing a number out there. We would have the bond reduced to sixty thousand dollars, the bond would still be active, and there'd be sixty thousand dollars left. And the only way the bond would get reduced to zero is after the town accepted it and one year. Then it can be, then that sixty thousand dollars can be returned to the applicant, until then, the bond's still active and ten percent is. Still out there for anything that might happen within that one year.
And I'm happy to fall under those rules, I asked for that, I may have asked for it incorrectly, but that's exactly what I was asking for, I'm not asking for anything.
Suggest that your attorney maybe edit and resubmit the letter to acknowledge that, what?
Can't do that, it, I didn't even wanna send that attorney letter to begin with, Delia asked me to.
No, MGL specifies.
If you wanna follow MGL, then you gotta reduce, but that, that, you have to reduce it to zero.
By following MGL to ask you to send a registered letter instead of just an email, that somehow requires us to reduce it to zero?
Yes, it's different, it's, it does. I can read, I can ask for a bond reduction from time to time in writing, to the planning board, you give it to me. I know you hold ten percent, I'm happy, oh, we've been doing it this way forever, I I, it's fine with me, but. Delia said, you're not following Mass General Law, you have to do it the right way, so I called my lawyer, I said, what do I do? He said, I have to send him a letter, it has to be certified, and that's what he did, so I've just. You know, I'm in the middle of the thing going bang, 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 with my head here, I'm happy to keep the rules the way they were.
Through the chair, I think. We either send a letter back to the attorneys indicating that, um, because the road under our subdivision isn't been accepted by the town. That we don't accept this letter, we will accept a bond reduction request, but we can't, we can't accept a zero bond request. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Do we have a a a format specified for requests for bond reductions, like as an email, something that.
Not in writing.
We don't have any kind of.
No, there's no Palestine, it's just basically, that's how the, uh, I think if, and I have to look at these, so, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanna say that, for the sake of the matter that's before us, there is a request for a full release. So we do have to respond to this within a certain period of time.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make that very clear, so we don't get confused about what is partial, whatever, the request is for a complete release. So there is a proceed, there is a timeline that we have to respond to, eh, within.
And that's why I'm, I guess, do we need a motion for me to basically re- re- reject the letter from the attorney and. Ask, please, um.
Well, you don't have to do that, you don't have, just just the rejection, because we're dealing with what's in front of us, we don't have to ask for anything else, what, you know, that, that's up to the developer. But what is in front of us is a request for a full release.
So I'll make a motion to deny the request for a full re- uh, release of the bond.
Sound okay? I'm good with that.
It's, yeah, may- maybe, maybe a way to go, there might be an easier way. I'll take a second for discussion.
I'll second that.
Would you be interested in withdrawing your request?
I I'll go back to what I had before.
But I don't.
Word it differently, but I was, was the way we've always done it, but I.
Just if I'm, I mean, you could certainly do that, I'm just saying for the sake of procedure, I believe this was stamped in with the town clerk, so. Correct.
Yeah, we, I think through the chair, we we've gotta respond to this, because it was brought in through the clerk's office, so. I think, I think Alex's motion of of rejecting it. And then following uh, our previous process, I'm okay with. I just, I think we've gotta do it officially and say.
You should tell your lawyer, tell your lawyer and ask him, uh, I I don't know what the procedure is either. I'm forced to do it something different, I mean, I ha- I've had to do it in other towns, and that's, cuz that's the way they required it, but. Not because it was something different than what we, the way we've always done it is fine with me. I I I can go, but I'll go back to that, but you don't even, well, how do you know it's Kevin, what's Kevin's gonna say? You you don't even, you haven't even, I've been asking for a bond reduction since John. And 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 I I talked, I, when I talked to you guys once, you said, put it in writing, so I sent an email, and I get an email back, do this.
Sorry, through the chair, Ellie, I guess I would make a friendly amendment to yours that. We do issue a letter, but before it gets sent out to verify with KP that we're, that we're. We do issue a letter, but before it gets sent out to verify with KP that we're that we're doing everything. I know we're spending money on attorneys, but I like to cover my bases. I do.
Just, I just wanna make it clear that um the tripartite. Agreement that is in place for phase two makes it clear what the procedure is for noting that a sub- subdivision is complete. That's what I highlighted. So the, as far as I'm aware, the board has not deemed this subdivision to be complete. So. What are we, why would, why would the board be releasing the bond?
You don't even have a.
We're not looking to co- totally release the bond.
But but that's what the, that's what the letter is requesting.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll 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 agree on that.
So I'm I'm saying at the, we have to respond to the letter that's in front of us. Within a certain period of time. That's, that is what's before the board tonight.
Then I think, well, we should, again, to chair, I think we should, to Alex's point with the motion. Send a letter back to the attorney indicating that the. Road's not complete, so we we will not release the bond. And that's that, and then leave it at that.
We we do have to say why it's not done, I believe.
It's not complete. It hasn't been approved by the, it hasn't been accepted by the town.
I just wanna make sure that, you know.
It's it's incomplete. We have not rec- we have not received, requested an an inspection. It's not.
No, and I mean, I agree.
The planning board, there is a form at the planning board completes and signs. It's registered with the registry of deeds. That indicates the subdivision is complete. That, as far as I'm aware, has not been done.
I think we need to get this off the table and and get back to the process that we've done in the past is. Get a bond reduction email or such like that, but not a complete zero bond. Retain our ten percent and move forward from there.
I got a short question. Say we do this all the time from now on and it looks like this completion is zero. When does Kevin Quinn? Look at this and zero everything out? Within forty five days of the town clerk accepting it? Is that the idea?
By then, he would have already, he would have already signed off and confirmed it's complete. So there would, there would really. You, there would be no question. Once you have that form in place. You would have already done your inspections. You've, you're satisfied that that the subdivision is complete. You sign off on the form, so there is no, after that that form is signed and completed, it's registered with the clerk. There are no further inspections that are needed, cause the subdivision is complete.
So I've I've seen him once before and we've got a sheet of paper from Kevin that says. He doesn't have to pay for this. He doesn't have to pay for that zero. This is done. That's during partial, we'll say.
It's now too. You don't, you need to get that now. You you don't know if the roads are complete or not. Just do, do, go through, go through the process. I I'm not holding anybody to anything, but unless I I I'm being forced to. The fact is, you can't make that statement that the roads aren't complete until you hear it from Kevin. You you gotta ask, uh, so I asked for a bond reduction to zero. I had to do it formally. I had asked for it a long time ago. But when Delia backed me, I had my attorney send this. Ask Kevin if they're complete or not. I mean, follow through.
Right, I and I, it's just that we have to give you a response within forty.
I'm just telling you. I I've asked for a bond reduction literally for six months and I, and nobody hasn't gone out and given me one. But I I've asked for bond reductions, it with John Chabon, I asked for it on Brittenel, I asked for him on Arrowhead, I asked for him on Lindsay, I've asked for him on all of them. And I, he's never even gone out and no one's even asked him to do it. You you you, I mean, it it's not right. It's not fair to me either. You know, do, if the roads are complete, uh which I believe they are, every single one of them, then. They sh- the bond, I I don't care if you hold it to ten percent. I I'm not, I I don't, I don't care about that. I I asked for that to begin with and maybe I worded it incorrectly, but the fact is, go get an answer. Have the bond reduced. I've been asking forever.
I think we just need to do that.
Yeah, based on what we have here, we gotta make.
Can I read back the motion and you guys tell me if it's what you're looking for? Okay. So I have a motion to deny the request for full release of bond. Um to send a letter to the developer indicating that the subdivision is incomplete pending inspection by Quinn Engineering. That's what I have. I I'll change it. I just.
Well, I mean, I would, I I would suggest removing the inspection part because you also need to sign off on a form and so there is a process. You have to actually sign up on a form to deem the subdivision is complete. So you can, you can remove that part, cause I mean technically the subdivision is incomplete until you sign off on it and say that it's complete.
I'm fine with that.
I gotta say this. How do you know? You're gonna sign something under the pains and penalties of perjury that it's not, it's not complete? When it is? How do you know? Go get an inspection report. Do do your job.
Put in the stand here?
By by leaving that out, uh, we're simply. We are saying that we don't know.
Well, you do know, it's incomplete.
Tell me how.
The subdivision is incomplete until the sub, until the planning board signs off.
How do they sign off if they don't know? They don't have a report. Where are you in semantics? All I asked for is a bond reduction.
I just think we need to vote on the motion and be done, but I I I want to make it to read it one more time, please.
Um, a motion to deny the request for full release of bond and to settle, send a letter to the developer indicating that the subdivision is incomplete.
I take that last part off.
Well, you have to do that according to MGL.
Yeah, you you've gotta give a reason why you're denying it.
Correct.
Yeah, you've gotta do that.
C- can I?
Go ahead, Lauren, you gotta help us out, cause cause I'm struggling myself.
So he sent this on September eighth. It's been, what, two weeks now? Um.
Well, it has to be, that it's a date that is stamped in by the town clerk. That's when the time starts.
So we have forty five days to respond or else, you know, we might as well not. Um, will we not, I mean, I know it's not on the agenda, but don't we have, didn't we get from Kevin today? Other, like, are we gonna have more reports within the forty five day period? Do we have to decide right now?
Right, I agree with her.
Could we, could we not just bump it to another meeting beca- pending?
With the other.
I mean.
Well, I mean, you, uh, it depends on what the timeline is. You could do that if you, if if it's, if you're not gonna run out of time. Um, but I mean, given all of the correspondence that we've been getting, is the subdivision anywhere near complete?
Well, I, it's a hundred percent, all of them, one hundred percent. Go out and do an adjust. Go out and have an inspection done.
Flurry of emails right up until meeting time, but I I just wa- I I wanna make it very clear. The this subdivision is incomplete because the planning board has not signed the form. To verify that it's complete.
There there's one more piece to this puzzle too. In our subdivision rules and regs, we cannot release a bond until the town has accepted the road. And have evidence of by affirmation, a vote from town meeting, so.
Right.
So.
And also it's in, and also it's in the tripartite agreement about when the, when it's, when it's considered to be complete. You sign up on a certificate of completion, which is the form that's registered with.
I think the answer to the point that we need to put for rejecting the attorney's a letter i- is simple. The, we can't release the bond fully because the road hasn't been accepted by the town. That's easy.
Is that what MGL says?
Right, but MGL is is stating that it has to be, that it's incomplete. The subdivision is incomplete.
So our subdivision.
Guys, I'm looking for a bond reduction.
I know.
That's all I'm looking for.
Right.
I don't wanna get into an. I don't wanna get into an.
It says the work has been completed and thereupon release the interest of the town in the tripartite agreement. I didn't put any words in anybody's mouth. The request before us is, the request before the planning board is for a complete release of the bond.
Okay, I am afraid for this, for this motion that's on the table, we're answering that.
Correct.
However. I still feel. That the developer has the right then to still request a bond reduction.
I'm fine with that.
That's all I'm asking for.
So, and and again, I guess I'm gonna say, okay, you know, we'll take this vote and with a little bit more careful wording, please.
I be careful.
Asking for a bond reduction.
I, okay, I I hear you. I don't know about how that vote works. If you don't, if you don't have any inspections, you don't know whether the roads are complete or not. How do you make a vote? How do you make a vote? You got, Lauren said, you have time. Go and ask, go ask. Ask Kevin for a bond reduction. How long is it gonna take? But it it's o- it's okay, I mean.
Through through the chair, let's let's handle the letter and then there's a second part to this, is get Kevin out there to look at it and see if it's. If the road, let's just go with one, is to the point where we can um reduce it to the ten percent. Because without that information.
You're jumping the gun, you're jumping the gun because we have not gotten our, we we can only act on requests from the developer. The developer has asked for a complete release. Now, that is what's before the planning.
And we're gonna reject that right now.
Okay, so let's let's deal.
Let's take that vote and get that baby done now.
Yes, yes.
We have room to discussion on that particular motion.
I'm gonna be the guy to keep talking, but I'm just gonna say, it seems like going forward, we should do partials. So we don't keep doing this again and again, uh, cause it's kind of annoying. For us to kinda, you know, and it, I I'm not gonna say how it got there, chicken or the egg, but. The partials, which is what the town seems to have been doing the whole time, is, did work, yeah.
Did work.
It did work.
It is in our regulations.
Yeah, and it it maybe wasn't an MGL thing, it was a town-based thing, but it it seems like.
Partial down to zero.
Well, going forward, he's gotta just.
Partial down to ten percent.
I I know, I'm just saying, but. Partial down to zero, which is an impossibility.
And that's what I'm I'm asking. So go for the bond reduction. Be careful about his wording.
Well, so what I meant by the wording, just so you know, or Norm's, all of the phases get to zero. And then there's a ten percent hold at the bottom of just what the total bond was. I so. I, what I was saying was, look at the phases, bring it to zero and then hold you ten percent.
Just, just, just. Kevin goes out, he's gonna do an inspection before he does the bond reduction and he may still find something missing.
I'm fine.
It might not be down to just, it might be something greater than the ten percent.
Correct, but that's for Kevin to do for us.
Yes, you gotta know that.
So I uh, I don't remember Robert's rules, but I'd like to call the vote.
Everybody's ready?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I think that's.
I'm just kinda curious on the certificate of completion.
Yeah.
Who signs it?
Uh, the planning board.
Uh, either of you, any of you?
I've never signed one.
I've never seen one, I've never signed one.
I I have seen one on file. It's been done in the town. I've seen them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I have no problem doing that, but.
No, I I don't either. I just, I just don't.
I don't remember signing one.
I've never seen one myself, but I've been doing this a long time.
But we, but we need to follow our procedure. If that, if that forms out there, let's get that form in play.
Think we've been doing it.
So you can run the ASBIL fees.
What the procedure we've been following and to you guys and ladies on the board can tell me is that. When this road's been accepted, then that's the opportunity to start the one year, when the town accepts the road in the town meeting. That starts the one year clock and then at after the twelve months or one year. Um, then at that point, the the the, it could be any developer. Can come with, come back to the town and ask for the bond to go to zero. At that point, again, I'm not gonna quote MGL, cause I'm not an expert. But then we can look at our subdivision regs. It says, then we can reduce the bond to zero after the sign off, which. Didn't done, and the town's accepted the road. And the one year's exp- and the one year's expired. I think those are the three.
Keep thinking of all of the subdivisions. Rolling Bridge, Ten Rod Road, Moose Meadow. I don't ever remember.
I remember getting final reports from back in the day, Cullen and and then uh, and then um. Kevin indicating that we have the ASBIL, everything's complete. And that gives us the thumbs up or thumbs down when we go to town meeting for the road acceptance. I remember those documents, but I don't remember a signed form.
Like, well, remember a road acceptance procedure is different from the comp- from the subdivision completion.
Correct.
Two totally different procedures.
Yep, and we've.
I guess, I'm just finding, I I would swear that. Would never sign.
But we got to from now on because that's the procedures.
Yeah, no.
So I'm good with that. So I guess the next step on this is.
Okay.
We need a request for.
I've been giving you a request for months.
Okay, that's it.
Please, can I give a verbal request right now? Have Kevin do some bond reductions.
All right, next item.
I I wanted an, I wanted an email.
So when I do that, is, am I gonna get an email back to follow Mass General Law? And you're gonna get another letter or we can.
If you word it the proper way, then yeah.
The proper way, but that's all right.
Let's walk through this one more time. Ask for the bond reduction. Let Kevin do the report and let him do the bond reduction and then get that back and then we can move forward from there.
I'll just say, please add bond reductions down like this, this, this and this. That's it.
I'm not, yeah, and I'm not sure I'd put any numbers with it. I would just ask for a bond reduction.
I won't put numbers, yeah, I just.
Am I wrong in in that aspect, Delia? I need help.
I have no comment.
Okay.
And that request will not need planning board approval to proceed.
I don't think we have in the past. I think it's been. Um, either the chair or the, at, again, we had only had planners for five or six years, but in the past it was. The chair and then future was Dave and John and now Delia would basically could. Is to tell the uh inspe- inspector, I'd say, engineer go out and do that, do their job. I'm I'm fine with that. I don't know what the rest of the board is.
No, that's good.
Once the part, once the release for a partial bond comes in. The board does not need to vote on whether or not an inspection should be done.
Correct.
Just get the report to go.
Well, it's it's, the thing is, it's not the inspection. Okay, all you, all you're doing is him to request a review of the bond, which does require an inspection by him.
But Norm to.
But you're, he, you are requesting him to come up with a new bond amount.
Okay, but I I I also wanna remind you that I do believe you have a procedure for partial release of bonds in your subdivision rules. I don't know it off the top of my head, but just make sure. That's all I'm saying, but again, we don't even have, we shouldn't even be discussing this right now, so let's not even get into that can of worms.
Yeah, yeah, I don't. I just wanna make sure that the board understands that when when that report comes in with that bond reduction, that does need a planning board vote. We just don't reduce bonds, whatever that report comes back in. That's gotta have a planning bad.
Yeah, well, I mean, a- as I said, I don't have any comment because my understanding is that there is a part, is a procedure for the partial release in the subdivision rules. I don't have those rules in front of me, so I don't know whether or not, I can't speak to whether the board is supposed to vote ahead of time or not, but again. We shouldn't even, we shouldn't even be discussing that right now.
Yeah, let's move on. It's, yeah, yeah, let's move on. Let's move on. What's the next one? My favorite one. Rules draft.
Is that something to do with me?
No, not at all. This is all bylaw stuff from the bylaw.
Is this more stuff for me on?
I think you're done, sport.
Yeah, see how thick it is?
I don't, there's nothing else, unless I'm through the chair, I don't think there's anything else for uh Mr. Blair.
Not on the agenda.
No.
So I, like in the past, I've left and then things have come up and I haven't been able to talk about it, so if everything is.
There's nothing else on the agenda and I I'd like to follow that.
In a motion, are we dismissing the entire letter?
You think we already voted on that?
Yeah, 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 the whole letter's being just basically rejected.
Right, correct. Because there's more than one issue.
I thought it was just a trip, did I miss someone?
There's, well, there's multiple lawyer letters, but that that specific one from the, I think from the eighth was was specifically.
Was about the complete.
Yeah, it was about.
Was about the complete release of the bond.
The one that, you know.
This is the only one that I've got.
Right, release of, which is complete.
It's just the release of the bonds, only I've got.
Yeah, that's, it's that one.
There wasn't anything else in here other than the tri-party.
Release of what?
Um, uh, phase three. Release that bond, that's the one I think we voted to say no to.
There are other attorney letters, but that was not the agenda.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. We can put that on a future meeting. So the next one is the stormwater management?
Is that in the packet?
The stormwater manager, yeah, it is, it's a, it's a nice.
Changed the rules and regs to that?
It's a, it's a brand new one.
It's a brand new one.
Is it from DEP or is it?
No, it's, it's from our bylaw committee in town, not, not subdu- not the zone.
Weston and Sampson made, made up this.
Weston ripoff?
Yeah, and then.
Did you get the bill yet?
And then uh, Haber Shala's group did, did this, took this to make this.
Oh, so this is the replacement for this thing, correct? That's what I thought. And I guess through the, the chair. The first basic question I have for this stormwater bylaw, has this been reviewed by? And I'll use the word because it's the only one I know, Weston and Sampson, if it hasn't, I don't even wanna look at this thing. Weston and Sampson wrote this?
Correct, the bylaw committee did not write this, this was drafted completely.
Wish I'd have known.
Weston and Sampson, the town, the former town administrator and the DPW director.
That Weston and Sampson was the original, not then.
No, the, it was sent, Weston and Sampson wrote it and it was sent to the bylaw committee for their review. They then submitted their questions back to Weston and Sampson and they attended a public meeting of the bylaw committee to address those questions. The bylaw is now in review with town council and a public information session is scheduled for October twenty third. For folks to come and learn about the bylaw.
How, how did they dare put the planning board to rule this thing, to run it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, Tamika's not gonna, so I I guess my, my suggestions through the chairs. I I don't know what to do with this cuz. This is a, a civil engineering document, I can't.
Yeah, and and to me that, you know, I I put a lot of ag stuff in here that should be in here, DP. You know, I call, call it DPW is the one that's gonna be running this thing, period, it's their headache.
I will say.
Thanks to the government.
This bylaw has to go to fall town meeting, so we're kind of out of time to make revisions to it. It's really intended to be for the planning board to understand that you will be responsible for enforcing the subsequent rules and regulations that come with it. If we do, we need to pass this at the town meeting um to have a bylaw placed by December thirty first of two thousand twenty five. Or we're in violation of our federal administrative order from the EPI.
And and I'm, I'm sorry, Tamika, for putting you on the spot.
That's okay.
Is the old stormwater management rules not in, in compliance with?
Correct.
They are not.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know.
Rules and regulations have not been drafted yet, or they're in the process, the bylaw has to come first and then the rules and regs follow it. Um, but we have to bring this to special town meeting.
Somebody from the, and again, I, I'm not, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but. Without you being here right now, this board would not have understood what the H is going on, and I'm frustrated with that right now. Cuz I've been throwing this in front of me and I've got no background information, I got no idea what I'm looking at, other than I can read.
I completely underst- I completely understand your frustration and in fairness, um. The staff has struggled as well, um, because it's now been through two town administrators in the last five months. And we've tried to piece it together and make sure that the bylaw committee had time and that we had time for a public information session, so. We've been kinda trying to, to bring the pieces together to make sure that it gets to town meeting, so I do understand your frustration with that.
And the biggest one, I, and I know Dick's got it circled and it was a huge one that I looked at is. Again, I apologize to the board, but. We, only thing we typically have enforcement over is our. Rules and regs and if we want enforcement of any zoning bylaw or any bylaw, we have to go through. The enforcement agent, which nine times out of ten is the building inspector is where we start. So to have this in here that the planning board and or its employees and agents designated to enforce this bylaw. I'm struggling with that cuz we don't have any enforcement. We, we don't have any, what's the word I'm looking for? Enforcement ability, yeah, yeah, help me out, Alex.
Power?
Power, thanks, Lauren, that's perfect, we don't have any enforcement power, except with like the subdivision.
I believe the bylaw would grant that though.
Okay.
Cuz usually MGL states that, you only have it's already over certain things if specified in a bylaw.
And we don't have enough to do. To have this thrown at us.
So, in fairness, it's been in the works for a very long time, but I think was not very well communicated.
Yeah.
And I think unfortunately, we have a pattern of bringing things forward at the very last minute and then there's a big rush to get things done.
Yeah.
And I think transitions in the administration have not helped that.
I gotta ask my, Delia, have you ever seen a, a planning board in charge of stormwater management? I, I know you don't have thirty years' experience, but I, I've never seen this before, usually it's a DPW that's in charge of this stuff.
In enforcement?
Yeah, enforcement and control. I have no problem putting this in like the subdivision regs is refer to this document that's handled by somebody else.
That makes sense.
But not for us to be in charge of it, that scares me to no end, I'm just putting this out to the board, yep.
Would the board be amenable to maybe posting um an agenda for the October twenty third meeting? Because Weston and Sampson and Chris are both gonna be in attendance.
Well, that'd be perfect.
So you guys could ask your questions at the public information session and then it would also answer it for the public as well.
But would they have time to change anything that comes up from there, that's what worries me cuz that, that's less than twenty days away from the town meeting.
It's the same thing you had mentioned long before, once public hearing is in there, they can continue the public hearing until they straighten things up.
So, it's not a public hearing, the bylaw committee is only required to hold a public info session.
Oh.
So it doesn't follow the same guidelines.
Zoning has to follow a public hearing.
Correct, but it's a general bylaw, so it's different, yep.
I'm, I'm, I'm just.
So that's unlikely you could make changes, but you could at the very least have your questions answered.
Do we send a, a que- uh, this is a question to, Delia, I'm putting this to everybody sitting at this table. Do we ask, is the bylaw subcommittee, I'm with the, I'm with the pooch, I'm shaking my head at this. Is that? I mean, again, this is my personal, I don't wanna be an enforcement agent for anything except that's I have control over. I, I really do not.
You mean in terms of drafting of the document?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
This thing is scary.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it, it could be a hundred percent right, Weston and Sampson's very good company, I'll, I'll say that, but I just. I had no input to this, yet I'm now gonna, and I'm speaking for me, I should be speaking for the whole board, but now I'm gonna be in charge of this? You gotta be kidding me.
On page, page two, clearing, any activity that removes the vegetative surface cover. Okay, so anybody that's gonna mow a lawn now has to file. For god's sakes, and, and for, and agriculture should be exempt because they mow all the time and, and whatever.
I, i- is there?
Does it define vegetative surface cover somewhere in here?
Um, no.
Or remove?
Almost everything else.
Vernio pools.
I think it's, that might be fingers the enforcement.
I, I'm scared crapless. I don't wanna be in charge of something that is, is, first, it's not our expertise. Weston and Sampson's never hired by us, we go through a civil engineer, not a stormwater management engineer. Did, do.
There is no, there's no explanation of how we would enforce it.
Yeah, that they have to draft.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, you have to have the bylaw to have the regs.
Yeah.
So is.
This is the bylaw and then the rules and regs.
Okay, even though it's, says rules and regulations.
Yeah, let, let, Lauren, that's, that's.
Okay.
So, real quick.
Keith, help me out here, man, cuz I'm struggling, hey?
Um, bylaw shall apply to all land distributing activities that are. Part of a new development or redevelopment that results in the disturbance of one, of an acre or more. So, that was one thing.
That's everything.
You can't plow a field for corn, to plant corn. You know.
Disturbing, yeah, twenty, thirty acres.
I, is, is.
And there's other things, but um, I was just gonna say. Hmm, there's the stormy water utility fee, which is every household has to pay.
When's our next meeting?
Uh, on the fourteenth, um, I just wanna make Lauren aware that, um, the stormwater, the draft bylaw was sent to the planning board in August. So at that time, you were not on the.
Okay.
Board at the time, so you may not have gotten that, or isn't on the website, I don't know. But I will, I will send that to you so that you're aware, so this is just the rules and the regs.
Okay, so this is the rules.
We have the jacket, right?
So this isn't the bylaw?
Correct.
I, I'm confused.
Someone just saying that something will be spelled out.
Didn't, doesn't, doesn't it say rules and regs to talk?
It definitely does.
It says management.
It refers to, back to a bylaw, so that's.
DPW advises these rules will have to be adopted after the bylaw is voted on in November.
These are the rules.
So where's the bylaw, is that the one that came in August?
Yeah, I can, I can send it, I'll send it to Lauren.
Let me look, I'm looking.
But it's.
So, this half and then it starts over again. Ten pa- twelve pages, which is to the management rules and regs. And then the front half is just the bylaw. Well, my, my confusing thing is, is we watch over it. And I'm not, maybe I'm not even getting it right, but. The DPW collects all this stormwater money. And there's no documentation of what the DPW, there's no, is there regs for them? You know, cuz that would make, I mean, I might not have read enough of it.
There is language in these regulations.
Yeah.
That we can. Uh, administration, since the board shall administer implant and enforce the regulations. Any powers granted to or duties implies imposed upon the board may be delegated in writing by the board to its employees or agents. Which means, I would say we could dump it on.
Right, but the question is, you probably have to consult with them to make sure that they have the manpower or womanpower. To actually.
Human power.
A human power, thank you, thank you.
Office space.
Well, I was just, I guess my, I'm not trying to start trouble, but they get all the money. This is, it, you know, so every house, it's not just new development too, every house is paying a fee, right? So, they, there's, there's gonna be, in, and this is past town, town meeting already, but. And it's meant for them to go around and clean up stormwater in, at some point, right? In stormwater, major storms, when they don't, they already have budgeted money. For other projects, this is supposed to have them go out and use this money to pay for labor. Rip rap, I'm guessing, but is. You know, is there a way for anyone to see?
To me, it's just creating a whole new department.
And I'm not saying they would missend it or something like that, but it's just like, it could be, you know, once a year, you, this. Maybe it's a, a bank account, I don't know what number it's gonna have someday, but.
Yeah, so if I, if you can try to answer your question, Keith, um, that was something, that was a question that was raised by the bylaw committee during their discussion.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I don't know what the answer to it was specifically from Weston and Sampson.
Yeah.
But I can say that that's um, more of an accounting question, however, it's a public record. So certainly it's, it's public information that somebody can say, hey, I would like to know what the stormwater enterprise funds were spent on in FY twenty six.
Sure.
And you could get that information, I can tell you that so far, they have not expended anything from the wage line items for that account.
Yeah.
Um, right now, it's just trying to meet the minimum requirements for MS four permit, which we've not been in compliance with for many years.
Yeah.
Um, but it's certainly a public record, if you wanted it.
Yeah, my other que- question, and it'd be to me too, is.
Or a board, but.
Planning board.
Yeah, I thought that a lot of this was supposed to generate a map of all the rivers that are road waters. It was our waste, dirty wastewater is contributing to rivers that lead to drinking sources. Does that, does that have anything to do with this, might? And then we, cuz part of it is. Yeah, the fact that, the. They fought their, the state asked us to do this because of pollution. It's not because they wanted the DPW to clean catch bases. You know, the state wouldn't, you know, come down on you for that, it has, so we're supposed, supposedly what I thought was we're supposed to. Have a study done on every river in town, if, and I'm open to being, being. Corrected or guided, right?
I think there was something that, that at least.
But will that happen?
Needed to map any of its stormwater systems.
Yeah, and they're, how they contribute to, to rivers and stuff and then.
Have a, have a detailed description of, okay, there's a culvert here that goes under the road, uh, you know, here's a head wall for this. Uh, I would assume here's detention ponds here, uh, and all of that kinda nice stuff.
But some of it.
And the only detention ponds are strictly subdivisions that were built, there was no other detention ponds. Let me get to a basic. Definition of the planning board.
Yeah.
Aren't we only in charge of zoning bylaws? Why the heck are we getting involved in?
Welcome to the twenty first century.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, some, yeah, there are some planning boards that have a, their scope is.
Expanded?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm a twentieth century guy, so I'm looking at what MGL, and I thought MGL was just zoning is what our authority was, so it opens it up? I appreciate that help, because when I'm, I'm reading the bylaw, and you did send it, thank you. I just didn't review it and that's on me.
Yeah.
Um, but we actually, based on this bylaw, issue permits. Everybody stand back, we're issuing permits for stormwater. Um, we're responsible for issuing stormwater management permits by the planning board, there's a whole definition out there in the, in the bylaw, it's there. But that is something we've never done before.
Gonna go out there and inspect and everything else and you're gonna be, uh, people are gonna call and you have to jump on it, it's gonna be. Over the last hundred years, we've had storms and.
Can we delegate our authority?
You can by this, but I'm, but not by this bylaw, the bylaw.
Yeah, the, the bylaw says the Rutland Planning Board shall enforce this bylaw and related regulations as well as the terms and conditions of all permits, notices and orders. And may pursue all civil and crim- criminal remedies for such violations.
And we have a, we have a seasoned assist, the system we've never had before.
So they gotta show, they gotta.
So what are we, what are we doing with this for tonight? I don't think, this rule, uh, I think we got a bigger picture of this bylaw.
Discharge, detection and elimination programs, that's what I was talking about, they've gotta create.
DPW advises these rules will have to be adopted after the bylaw is voted on, so is this, is this just an information?
Information, yeah.
Correct, this is essentially information only so that you guys don't go to town meeting and then say, oh my god, we are, we're the ones that are in charge of this.
I just figured that out, reading this bylaw.
Yeah, it's just come down the pike much later than it should have, unfortunately. So if you guys are available on the twenty third, I would highly recommend asking questions directly of Weston and Sampson.
I'll ask both of you while you're in, you don't need to, if you don't know, you don't know. This draft bylaw that was done in August, I apologize, you know, the date in front of me, let's say the middle of August. Is that the final one, or has there been an up, so we've never gotten that?
Been updates to it, um, but it's with town council right now, so it, it has not been published because it's not technically in final form.
And I apologize, have you been tied into any of this?
No.
I'm, I'm mad at that wet, wet hen right now.
Yeah, I.
I, I'm not asking you to comment, I don't want you to get in the middle of this.
But from, from my emails back and forth with Tamika, uh, back in August. If the bylaw doesn't pass, we'll be in violation of our federal MS four permit. Um, and apparently we've been in that uh, violation for a few years, but we've been making attempts, so they've been giving us a break. Uh, they've given us until December thirty first, twenty twenty five to adopt the bylaw, or we risk being charged daily fines in the neighborhood of twenty five K a day. Uh, so.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm, I'm, I remember Joe telling me about this, about how we were been, how we're.
This seems like we're the nail in this situation.
Yeah.
Well, what's more interesting is only half of the communities in Massachusetts are doing this, so. There's plenty in violation, but theoretically, they haven't really enforced that, but they're just saying we set a number.
I think it depends on.
How rude you are.
Who they catch up with, if that makes sense, you know?
And why would we not adopt this, just cuz we were a little gun shy with all the terminology and everything wrapping our arms around it and all that?
Don't you think we have enough to do just with what we're doing right now? And then to have this dumped on us also? And we have no money in this town to produce extra help and, and engineering for things? What fee? And then you tell me that, that little hundred dollar fee now is gonna be a thousand dollars?
Yes, Dick, just for you.
It should.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, through. I I guess what I'm asking is through the chair, do on the fourteenth, do we ask the bylaw? Chairman or and whatever support that she may have to come before us and let's talk about this in a in a. In a, uh what's the word I'm looking for?
To be fair, Tim, I don't think they're gonna be able to answer your questions.
Yeah.
Cause their only involvement was kind of putting their rubber stamp on it and asking a couple of questions.
Can we ask them to bring Sam, Weston and Sampson with them?
So I think because Weston and Sampson is coming on the twenty third, it might be hard to get them to come out for another meeting. Cause they had already attended one of their meetings, so we can certainly ask, but we also pay for that.
I know, it's just, when when I'm looking through this bylaw, I am, I am scared to no ends with all this cease and desist and all of this legal. Ramifications that this board now has can will basically be in charge of.
Well, I mean, I will also s- um note that other towns, this so when they put out, they can, they put out R F Ps.
Yep.
Or RFQs for um.
Oh, management companies?
Consultants to advise them on.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, so you're not, you don't have to be alone if you choose not to.
I guess we can modify it too.
Can we just let the chairman of the bylaw committee know that, yes, she's. I I get it, we got it in August, but since August, there's been no communication with this board about anything that's going on. The legal ramification, the legal discussions, the updates or the um. Or the discussion with Weston and Sampson and I'm I'm struggling with that.
I imagine we have to hold a public hearing.
No.
Oh, cause they're, they did.
Zonings are the only thing required public hearings.
It's a general bylaw, Keith, so it doesn't require a public hearing, but they do hold a public info session. And that's the one that's gonna be on October twenty third. And that's the one that Weston and Sampson is coming to.
Held to that legal standard, then I guess.
No.
We don't get in trouble for that.
But this is pretty.
It's pretty deep stuff.
Yeah.
It does say if you, the owner of the property has to maintain it, which makes, reminds me of if we own. Obviously, it just says if if we own a road, then then we we're responsible for fixing it, which I think we do anyway.
I got so many questions and again.
Sometimes.
I'd like to see the final draft and and be able to.
Get that.
Can you get that and and get it to Delia and then through Norman to the board, cause I I really wanna look over the final draft and compare to this one. And see if there's any major changes.
Tamika, are you gonna, you're making a note to request it or do I need to?
Uh yeah, no, it doesn't have to be a formal request, I would, we've had a shift and I can get that, okay.
I mean, to arrest the board, I don't, I don't know how you you guys and ladies feel, but man, I am a little bit terrified that I'm gonna be in charge. I, me personally, and then the rest of the board in charge of the bylaw.
Let the state think we're enforcing it.
No, I'm I'm fine with the enforcement, I'm just.
Yeah, we did it.
This opens up a whole new realm of responsibility for this board.
Yep.
And and that's what's got me probably the most.
Well, wouldn't um say someone who's developing something, they just gotta go through it and say. You know, within twenty days, I I swear I did this, you know?
The other, the other portion which will impact this board is somehow we have to tie this to our subdivision, A and Rs. Uh senior housing, all it does this all have to be tied to it somehow?
Yeah.
I was, I knew that nod was gonna happen and we don't have any of that tied right now, so.
Looping, maybe town council likely, cause it's gonna have to be a complete rewrite.
Yeah, maybe we could do the same thing that we did with the twenty twenty master plan.
Get it done and let it sit for two years?
Opted and put it on the bookshelf and there it sits.
Yeah, but to Tamika's point, if you get some young hotshot in there that wants to make some money, he's gonna come knocking at our door wanting to make money.
It's, this thing is different.
I just, I mean, I see noncriminal dis- disposition, appeals. I mean, we could tie our entire planning board up one night with just this portion of uh bylaw. And not get business done, I I'm not in in excited about being here till midnight. My third of my meeting is uh on permitting and uh this bylaw. I don't know, I again, maybe I'm getting excited, but this just.
Wow, a long time ago, I had asked the select board for a map of the Vernal Pools in Rutland. They didn't know where it was, they didn't know where the Vernal Pools were.
So they know what they were.
Well, Calcom knows where they are because we we, that's where we put them, but um. Once again, for crying out loud, half of the information is not out there. And 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 just to throw a monkey wrench into it, where is our open space and master plan? What, you know, I mean, you're gonna throw all this other crap around, this is, this is.
I I I.
Nine months, that's all ahead.
It looks like we're stuck with it.
Well, I, I'm a pushback guy, I like to push back. And this, this is, to Tamika's point, I'm frustrated that the communication is so poor. And honestly, where I wanna go with this is the select board is in charge of that committee. Please explain to me why this is, the communication hasn't happened and honestly, somebody's gotta get a hold of this. Because Mike, I I and I'll take responsibility for not reading in August, but anything since then? That we haven't had any updates on, I take no responsibility for that, I'm.
The committee, they didn't get it until August as well.
Yeah.
Oh, so they got the same time we did?
They they asked many, many times and it was not provided to them.
Okay.
And so they unfortunately are in a very similar boat as we guys are.
Okay. Thanks for that info.
It would be interesting if this is boilerplate or if this is like exuberant.
That's the questions I wanna ask to Weston and Sampson, is this something that you've done in five other towns and this is just?
That was actually a comment that they shared, is that this is a pretty standard bylaw that you would see in another community. Um there isn't anything that's necessarily Rutland's specific.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bust up Dave George, are you stuck with this in your planning? John, do you have to do this too? Anyhow, I'm sorry for taking up too much time, this just scares me to no end.
If we can sue the state.
Good luck with that one.
It's actually the federal government you'd have to sue.
If we can sue the federal government.
It's not even anybody there to respond in the suit.
All right, enough said, um we got the information, I think the boards made the request to get more information. And uh. We we've got to, we've got a fourteenth meeting, we can, I would put this on the agenda for the fourteenth, for the board to discuss the bylaw and the rules and regs.
Sure, if you wanna put that on the on the.
I'll double check too, because I I'm pretty sure that the bylaw committee is meeting on October ninth, but I have to confirm. Um and I'm certain this is gonna be on their agenda, cause they haven't yet made their recommendation for town meeting. Um so I can let you know of that date, so if you wanted to attend and ask them questions, even individually.
Yeah, I mean, we can go, we just can't go as planning board, more than two of us can go as planning board, remember, unless we post a meeting. If we post a meeting, we're showing up in force.
I'll confirm that.
All six of us and we're bringing our planner and she's loaded.
You could, you could put a joint, post a joint meeting, I don't, I mean, I don't know if there's any issue with that.
Any any uh, any uh.
Any anticipation of.
Any thoughts about that? I mean, I, considering this thing is all posted around us, I think maybe we should stop in and say, what's going on here?
And I can give them a heads up and just say that this is something you guys would like to come and talk about.
I don't wanna force the board, it's I'm just, I'm reading this thing now and I'm like, hopefully, the final draft is close to this. Cause if there's any big changes, should like to know about it.
Yeah, I, the changes were uh were not significant, um but the, but I can send you a copy of the draft that's currently with town council now. And then once town council approves it to final form, then we'll publish it um pu- publicly on the website for folks to review.
Man.
So the planning board would be the only one that's doing all the work on this. Do we have to have sign offs from other committees?
No, this just, it looks like.
Building inspector, everything is okay or?
Granting authority by this.
Permitting system.
Yeah, the permitting system, it's us.
Oh, for God's sakes, okay.
But it also talks about fees in here and then administrative fees.
We can, we can update the fee schedule as we see fit.
I mean, there's that's something to consider.
Yeah, I just, wow.
I think they all go to DPW though.
Well.
That takes more, that's like leaves more room for the rest of the town.
Yeah.
And the budget.
Well, for God's sakes, then I wanna see a spot put on my freaking catch basin on my road for crying out loud. I never see one, it never gets done.
If you collected fees, it would go into the stormwater enterprise.
Yeah, it does, that's what's, it says that in here.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say it doesn't go to general fund.
Tamika, it does.
Just want the freaking town to do the, do their work and.
See, the funny thing about this, this bylaw says, the money goes to the DPW, but it doesn't say who's in control of it. This bylaw doesn't, unless I'm missing something.
No, I I'm making that face, cause I think that was one of their questions and it might have been in the revision.
The road is truly a.
Yeah, cause I'm I'm looking at this, it goes in the stormwater enterprise fund. And I don't remember with the town who they voted to control that, I'm guessing it's the DPW. Yeah. So again, this is where, oh, this is his speech, we have all the authority, but no unfunded mandates. Yeah, well, the feds, the feds hit it to us. All right, that's enough said, I'm talking.
Yes, we we need the uh motion to adjourn.
Do we have any public comment? I think we ran them all out.
I think everybody left.
They weren't even upset about stormwater management.
Yeah, that's, everybody complains about that hundred dollar fee in this town. I don't have a stormwater thing in front of my house.
I heard the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Before you go to discussion, was there anything I didn't think about? Cover the granite curbs.
Bylaw subcommittee.
Tomorrow, I apologize to everybody here that I I screwed up and didn't uh post it for last week, that was on me. I didn't tell Tamika and Delia, so that was on me. So, and I don't plan it to be too long, it was just starting to get into the weeds on uh. The uh, what we need to talk about for the uh, putting it into the uh subdivision. So, that's it, no more discussion.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye. We are adjourned.
All right.